Call me to order seven hundred forty and record the members present.
Come on, Bailey.
There it is.
Morris?
Here.
Phil?
Here.
Shan?
Here.
Robert?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
You want to go one more further or you want to wait?
I'll wait on her. How are you, Phil?
I heard.
What do you mean heard?
Working.
Well, Phil, I'm in the cold.
Old field now?
Yeah. Mr. Russell is going to be the secretary.
She's looking at minutes for meeting last year.
You're going to say, if you keep it running, we don't even have to show up. They've done the whole thing themselves.
No.
The bond first bond went in May. I think they did a resolution. I want to say February. I think there's a special board meeting in February.
She probably just a good shame. You're not by ourselves that you... We can probably get on to meeting.
Yep.
That's our good.
Item number two is consent agenda. The following items of routine nature normally approved at bond meetings, at board meetings, will be approved by one vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. Consent agenda consists of discussion, consideration, and approval of all the following items.
Can I motion approve it?
I'll click on it.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes. Item three, so item four then is discussion with Red Scott. Contract, contractors incur three design via phone to answer questions for the construction management and architectural services to be provided. I think we need to find the contract before we call them, don't you?
Yeah, table. I thought we said earlier there was table.
There's a table that came back too.
Table number five also, we'll come back to that. Number six. Number seven. Number eight. Number eight.
Number nine.
Number nine. And number ten.
Number eleven. Table that one too.
Call it. Yeah. Probably better than you two, yeah. Okay, item number twelve then is board discussion of possible action on school store fundraising.
We could do nine, David. Don't talk about that.
Because that includes doing the bond with Smith and Company that's giving presentation.
The school store is kind of like eBay's or Rakuten. You guys know what that is?
What or what?
Like eBay's or Rakuten. It's a site that you can get on and you just sign into it real quick and then it takes you to all these different stores you can shop at that are normal stores that a lot of people shop at online, whether it's Walmart or whatever. It has a list of them. And you can go on there and do your normal shopping that you would normally do and you earn money from that. So it's a chance for our school to earn some extra money to help do field trips or whatever we want to do in that type of way. Sometimes pay lunches for kids that are going or doing things to help out. Rewards, incentives, different things. I will be getting the packets on that on next Tuesday, I believe it is. Then we'll give a little bit more information, but I need to make sure we got that approved before we move on.
It's just a fundraiser goes.
Mm-hmm. But it's no, we're not selling anything. We're not, it's not, it's not a go out and get. If they sell, we send the information home with the kids. You guys can get on at home and sign up for it if you want to. Send it out to grandparents, friends. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
These are remote. Computer illiterate.
You know, the vote.
Yeah, this is possible action. You have to vote on any fundraiser.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve it.
I second.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yeah.
Reed?
Yeah.
Morris?
Yes. Item thirteen is board discussion of possible action on a senior trip itinerary scheduled from May seventeenth to May twenty-third.
If you flip almost to the end of your documents, it's the like fourth page from the back. One more, Russell. Nope.
On the front, it's on the backside.
Somehow it got on the backside there. Right there. Pretty similar to every other year. We've got the hotels, everything scheduled, flights. We're just working on the ending, raising of funds. We've just got to approve the senior trip for this year.
Make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes. Item fourteen is board discussion of possible action on the bid from Bank Central for twenty desktop computers.
That's coming out of that grant money that we have. Part of it was to replace the desktop computers in our classrooms. So that's all that is and have Bank Central replace them. They have their new computers. Yes, sir. Be twenty desktops and the bid of their seventeen thousand dollars.
So...
What'll they do with the old ones?
They will be put up for surplus in either silent bid auction, taken to an auction somewhere. And after that, if they don't sell, then they'll be disposed of.
And there's twenty of those?
Yes. There'll be at least twenty. Because we've still got some older ones that we need to get rid of too. That we, so once we get everything replaced, we'll do a surplus list to have the board approve the surplus.
I'll second.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Yes. Tell me what the warrant to was. They did a pretty good one, John.
Did they care about that too?
Yes, they did.
Item fifteen then is board discussion of possible action on the school calendar for twenty twenty-one school year.
Looking at it from this year to next year, the only differences would be on fall break would be the dessert, second to last page in the office packet there. They would be out Thursday, Friday, and the following Monday. And that Tuesday before would be parent teacher conference. That Wednesday before would be the parent teacher conference day that evening and they would take that day off on that following Monday. So that gives you three days of fall break. And then Thanksgiving would be a full week long. Well, that's what most area schools around us are going to in order to stay with the current tech and everything else. We kept ours at a full week also.
A lot of time off from school.
It is a lot of time off. We still have the same number of days.
I approve it.
And then the other, okay. I'm going to say that Easter break also has one day added into it on the following Monday, but that is due to also the second current teacher conference day. Let's put on that Monday after.
Can I second that too?
Nope.
Give me a second. When's the last day of school?
The last day of school would be May thirteenth and graduation would be the fifteenth and the fourteenth is the special birthday date.
Go over to that.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Reed?
Yeah.
Morris?
Yes.
We figured that the meeting would probably be plenty long with everything else, so we just...
There's not a lot of extra stuff around on the fall games.
Any like fine contracts off, Patricia?
I found a thing on her three. But it doesn't have anything about the general contractor and all that. It gives some of the prices. And it's just an estimate.
Let's see that.
I don't think it'd be a current three.
I remember that meeting we talked about.
Well, that's the, we got Stephen Smith, we have Kerr, and we have Red Scott.
Right, but I think that he's the one, Stephen Smith, what group, the contract for that. That's what he gave us to talk about.
Captain's side, who's here, yes?
You like?
Do you hear names?
I do some days, yes.
Jesus.
Some days your whisper gets it where I can't hear. And some days it works wonderful.
I don't know if Davey doing any.
Did we, did they come and talk to us before we established a bond committee?
Yes, but then they established, you know.
But...
Yes, they did.
I just didn't understand the point that you had. You done with it?
So you found no contract too?
Not so far. I haven't found, I know we had, I think it was a special meeting, Stephen Smith was here and the contractors.
Okay.
I remember them talking, but I cannot find...
It would have been later, like right before we ran, because remember they come back and made us redo the contract for them. We had to pay them. It says in a percentage, if it passed, we had to pay them so much upfront because of the bond history, so it would have been like, I want to say a month or something before it called it money. Do you remember that?
I looked like November through...
Probably, not you.
February, I think it was. Are we waiting on Stephen Smith to get here now?
That and making a call.
This is, no, this is the contract.
If I can go search my computer, it would go a lot faster than going through those page by page.
That'd be great. That's what I thought, yeah.
Let me try that.
You want me to stop me?
No, no, we're here.
Pass that back to her. Pass that back to her. She'll like, she'll like to unlock all that when we want to make phone calls.
You might be able to go in your archives and find it faster than we can.
Maybe.
Including driving back to Alva and getting out of it.
While she's looking through the list, looking for that, did y'all look through that list to make sure that looked correct on the, for Kerr? For everything in the bond that you actually, the very... And then if you flip front to back, it shows, breaks it down, exterior ADA and all that. It's already done.
But we built the, we built the sinks ourselves here. I mean, the cantors.
And the doors.
Yeah, the doors. That's what that's about.
Doors or fell?
Yes.
Yeah.
Davey did, we didn't. Davey did, we didn't.
Our school, all the stores, the stalls. You been making a handicap? Yeah, we have to wait for, when we talked about it first. I mean, when we were doing this.
But we did talk to him.
We didn't. Like this was two years or three years ago and there was, I don't know, here. It was when we first started. It was his first year here. Miss Burgess was here.
Doing the math on this, we saved a hundred and forty thousand dollars if Davey's a construction superman.
That's why we...
That's why we did.
Yeah. And then take the twenty-four thousand off the gym.
Okay.
And the, I told you about the deal on the, I ran into on the handicap sink, the handicap bathroom. Is this up in water or what? No.
At your house?
No, at Boiling Springs. I had a, had a sink.
You were at Boiling Springs? Hmm? You were at Boiling Springs?
Worked there, yeah.
I was going to go, the water's always cold. The, they put me in the handicap bathroom and I had a sink in a box. And I was going to put that on. He says, no, you can't use it. It's not handicap. Get me a handicap sink. So he goes into, buys a handicap sink, brings it out, pulls it out of the box. I pulled the one I had out of the box that were exact same sink. But the one was like two hundred dollars more. Because it's a handicap.
No problem with him?
No.
You're right on a handicap.
So late now, huh?
Many years. You couldn't figure out how to use a pen. The only difference was that one told you, put it at this height. When I pulled up the regulations on it, it said, must be between these two heights. And have the knee clearance. Mm-hmm. Have the...
If you want, or...
Pipes that don't burn.
On the ag facility one?
Yeah.
That thirty thousand for restrooms? Does that stand on there?
I thought we were told we had to.
Okay.
Because it's a, it's a place where we have soft chips. That's what we were told when we did that.
I can see thirty thousand rent there.
Okay, good. I also can see living the whole outside extension masonry. See, that's these numbers. I think they throw them out there and then we could, you know, improve all this and there we go. We get in trouble. They're sitting there, probably packed up around there.
One gallon of paint's only forty bucks. I saw that five gallon bucket that I was at two dollars and thirty cents. Give her about one bucket.
Oh, you're going to be just painting?
Mm-hmm. Paint, just give them a bucket. About handicap toilet. That's a handicap toilet. I can plow it right into the church.
No, that's a problem. Now it's just going to paint.
You know what I'm talking about, man.
I'm on exterior.
I'm back on interior. No, the exterior doesn't even stand by. What are you going to do?
Sometimes I feel like I'm watching like Laurel and Hardy or something.
Check, can you turn a little bit more, turn on exterior?
I just said that I don't see how we could do that for twenty grand.
I need to put a mirror and stuff.
Exterior?
The whole outside of that ag building?
No. That's bad. I was looking on the exterior of this building. Well... It looks, looks like that the, well, the place is where that block filler is cracked off and we just painted over it.
Yep.
So it may be kind of probably sandblasted or something.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, if it says repair, existing masonry? If that includes painting and everything else, or that's just repairing it? Getting it ready to be painted.
I don't know.
Because they were talking about those cracks too and they were going to repair those, so I don't know if that meant, all they did, they did the painting.
I think the numbers got switched. There's the sandblaster fixing it. I can see it costing thirty. Yeah, I don't know. I'm looking for it under here.
Yeah.
Ken's on how you're talking about repairing the cracks in the block that we're talking about. Yeah, they need to be sandblasted and cleaned up. Get this five hundred liters of paint on it, but that could run in some money up there. That's what you noticed at the very beginning of this. You can't see where a bathroom costs thirty thousand and clean up the whole entire building costs twenty thousand.
Yeah, we already got, depending on what they charge on the...
There's a list of renovation. Put the handicap bathroom.
Yeah. I like marking them where they're not needed ourselves.
Well, that's what the sidewalks and...
I understand. That's what I'm saying.
Forty, fifty, and sixty. The auditorium, I should dust these down here, right?
Mm-hmm.
So we can mark that off too.
I don't know what we can do. I'd like to talk to Davey about it first, but I know that all this, anything that we can do here in-house, I think we'd better put on here because you're not, you don't got all these other costs on top of it.
We'll ask questions. We got all these things, tables. We want to just table and have a special meeting in a couple weeks.
Okay.
That way we can get all the documents that we want to look at here. We can talk to Mr. Davies. I don't know, what's up with that reserve down on the auditorium?
They're not handicap. They're just fixed.
Well, just so you know, Jordan Smith is coming here tonight. He'll be, he's leaving Woodard right now.
We gotta have a paper. Somebody's gotta have everything ready to go. I'm going to, I'm going to agree with you on that. We'll make a motion then?
Yep.
I didn't do anything.
Anyone text the band on the phone here?
Uh, yes, I will. We just got the call.
Close, please.
Woodward?
Uh... I must run the paper.
Well, let's do, where's this documents room at the center?
You want me to call Patricia back down here?
Yes, please.
You don't want to pick up this damn trash.
Oh, would we include Brian?
You're on video.
Davies on the discussion then?
It's a...
I need to get that part.
Answer her phone in here. She's not answering.
She busy.
Yeah. Come back.
So, we talked about the thirty thousand and the bathrooms, or bathrooms and... What was the other one?
Twenty thousand on the exterior part building or they're sandblasting and how are they fixing the cracks?
Anybody read bond resolution? How much we were calling it bond for?
Oh, yeah, it's almost a million.
Nine hundred thousand. Nine hundred thousand. The actual bond resolution itself is ninety-five thousand.
That we, uh, that Davey and us, we save a hundred and forty thousand, okay?
Yes.
Nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand.
Million was a million.
That was about one million.
She's not answering.
Eighty thousand.
That was a million.
Eighty thousand.
This is what we need to figure out and worry.
There she is.
In all of this.
I was trying to tell you to come back, come back. She'll have everything you guys need.
Contracting with Red Scott, contract for construction management services continued upon agreements with the school's legal counsel after reviewing the contract. Contracted for three design for agriculture, architectural services continued upon agreement. Okay, so we did contract the proposal.
Well, for the next year.
Is that it?
That's the, pretty much, this. Contracting, I don't think, but they had some of that. But I did not receive a copy of the contract.
Okay.
Well, Dan, you have your documents for us to sign.
Yeah, it's just minutes aside from the contracts and the resolution.
Morris, we already put the phone?
Yeah.
You want to bring him home?
I already did.
You did?
So...
Do it. He was at Woodrowhead in this way. He had a meeting at Woodward at six P, six P M.
Where's the other one? Sorry. Hello? Mr.?
In my office. I have no idea, you're funny.
Is that elementary doors or something?
Right. He said that, uh, he kept a hundred and forty thousand dollars left. And right, they, three parts of that.
Consultant, I'm not consultant.
No. It, uh, it's on the, on the project like that. Ag building.
Yeah.
Restrooms.
Well.
Exterior masonry.
And the handicap up front, uh, he, I don't think you can do the handicap, or I don't think you can do the masonry, because that's going to be a lot of work. You know, I don't think that would be safe for him to do.
And in margin the gym, that restrooms.
I think you could do that, yes. And the han, and the handicap handrails out front.
That's fourteen thousand. I can't, I couldn't count up to a hundred and forty thousand, but that.
Also, that was kicking in, uh. That may be the construction manager too. But Morris just looked it up and we did sign contracts with them last year. Because the, uh.
Do they have copies of our contracts on file?
The Cur? Off ask him again. I think I asked first on it, I don't think they had anything to do with it. Our contract, well, they said our contracts were expired. Yeah.
He just wants to see what we have.
Yeah. Well, you guys wanted to, we'll just discuss that, all that at later date, then we can find everybody.
I agree, I agree.
Okay, then I'll make the motion if we want to set a date or.
I don't want to set a date until we get a chance to get a meeting.
We get all the doc, I'll make the motion, we find all the documents.
Or you make that motion, we'll let, put us behind on our.
We had to have it done by February like the fourth.
Okay, so we're still good.
Couple of weeks.
Okay. Just double check.
I'll make the motion then, if we do that.
My second.
What were you issuing for?
The juror.
To the juror. We tabled everything, we'll just, yeah. Make the motion, we adjourn at seven forty-four.
My second.
Uh, Pro Patrick?
Yes.
Uh, Babcock?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Does anyone know about what time she hit the?
Seven thirty-five probably.